Yeah, you are now.
All right, we get the red light on, ready to go. All right, let's call this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting on August 31st, 2017, to order. We'll start this thing with invocation, and since our normal person that leads us in prayer is not here, we'll just call on Mr. Morrow to lead us in opening prayer.
Lord, pray with me, please. Hallelujah, Father, we thank you for many blessings and opportunities you give us each and every day. We ask that you be with this board and other local boards and state boards as they make decisions on behalf of the citizens, you provide us the guidance needed to make wise decisions on your behalf. We ask that these things that Jesus Christ sent me pray.
Amen.
Great, thank you, Mr. Morrow, I appreciate it. Let's call this Planning Commission meeting into session, so Ms. Lawrence, if you would step into, we'll start with old business.
All right, we need to do the minutes, the approval of the...
Okay.
Motion approved.
A motion approved by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item two passes. Item number three, old business, Ms. Lawrence, sorry about that, I got ahead of it.
That's okay. Under the old business, there are five hearings scheduled for Monday, do we need to review any of those?
I mean...
Anyone want to see them?
Have you had, um, have you had anything on any of them that we need to know about?
No, sir.
Okay.
No calls in opposition or anything.
Okay.
All right. Item number four, new considerations then.
Okay. All right, the first item is a conditional use permit for Ivan Rutledge at 31-39 Star Road. This property is located on the east side of Star, it's a three-point, I'm sorry, it's a 6.55 acre parcel, it's zoned A1. Mr. Rutledge is seeking the conditional use permit to mine 3.5 acres at that location. He's doing excavation work to dig a three acre pond, that's an aerial view of that property. He estimates that the project will be completed within 90 days. He does have his small construction notice of intent and SWIP prepared for DEQ, it was included in the application. And this property is owned by Robbie Walters, Mr. Walters is here if you have any questions today. This is just a view down Star Road, this is the entrance to that site, and these are surrounding properties.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Or second motion. Say, what am I doing here?
Public hearing.
We're setting a public hearing. So we got a motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? All right, motion A passes for public hearing. Item B.
Okay, the next item is just a discussion of some proposed amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance. Y'all have a handout with those listed, there was three items. The first one deals with the definition section of the ordinance. You can see the current wording for the pre-cut homes. In the second sentence, it lists what's included as a pre-cut home. We want to add metal in there for people who are building metal buildings with living quarters, just to clarify and let them know that's where we look at those at, is in that pre-cut home definition. Just stating that it's one of those things that are listed, you know, that's the way we view those, as a pre-cut home.
Okay.
The next one refers to the townhouse residential district, the R3. The current wording shows the information in parentheses for two family townhouses and also the three and four family townhouses. We're just gonna take that out and just simply put two family townhouses and three and four.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions on...
Yeah, what is, uh, people are building metal buildings to live in?
Oh, yeah.
With living quarters?
Kind of like barns, a kind of accommodation barns. But then in front of it is the living area and the back may be a two, three bay shop or, you know, or even a barn, I mean, yeah.
So we're prohibiting that?
No, we're just clarifying where those, you know, the definition and including metal in that definition for a pre-cut home. You know, they always want to see where it says that, and so we've always looked at them being in the pre-cut home definition, but we're just gonna clarify that and include it, just add that to it.
All right, Ms. Lawrence, do you need any kind of action on that or just making the board aware of it?
We want to set...
Was Craig on over all this?
Uh-huh. He was aware of it, CPDD. Also, we'd like to set a public hearing for October the 2nd.
Okay. Got a motion by the board. Mr. Gaines, Mr. Gaines with a motion to set a public hearing for 10-2 of 2017, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. All right, item five, site plan and architectural review.
Okay, this is for New Vision Fellowship Church at 652 Luckney Road. That property's on the east side of Luckney. The church owns five, let's see, sorry, 5.25 acres, it's zoned RE1A. That's an aerial view, you can see the existing church on the property. They're proposing to add 3,686 square foot addition to the church. It's an addition of a welcome center, ministry rooms and a portico. That's the elevation or the rendering of what the building will look like. This is the elevations for the building, it's a metal building. And then this is the floor plan, you can see the portico there on the front, I mean, the welcome center on the front, and then the ministry rooms will be added to the rear of the building. It is metal and the addition will match the existing church. Mr. Parker has reviewed the drainage plans and everything was in order. This is a view of the church, and then these are surrounding properties.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? Motion passes. All right, item six, nuisance properties. Pick this up from Mr. Slay, since he's not here. It's continuation of Kenneth Matthews Estates nuisance property at 145 Barefoot Springs Road in District Number Four. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of 145 Barefoot Springs Road? No one speaking, we're ready to take action if the board chooses so. Got a motion to...
Oh, I'm sorry, these are the pictures.
Okay. Yeah.
Daniel's got an appointment today.
All right, so these pictures were back from August 1st, before that meeting when she was here. And these are the new pictures. I think you had wanted her to move that old vehicle in the front with some of the... And it's still there.
It needs to be moved.
Right.
I'd say, at this point, send it up.
Declare it a nuisance.
Got a motion by Mr. Gaines to declare it a nuisance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item B is Mr. Curtis Severn, is it Severn?
Sebran.
Sebran. Nuisance property at 307 Louise Lane, District Number Three.
I think Mr. Sebran's here.
Okay, great.
So these pictures were taken June the 20th, we'd received complaints about people living in campers on the property, rubbish and debris.
Hmm. Think...
And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the 29th.
You need to come call.
Hang on just a second.
Come up to the mic, sir, if you would, give us your name and your address for us.
Right there to your left side.
Hey, tell, hey, hang on one second, hang on one second.
Pretty steep.
Okay, tell me your address, Mr. Sebran.
307 Louise Lane, around in Mississippi.
All right, go ahead.
And physically, I'm not physically able to keep it up, so I hired a man. All of this has been taken care of, we have pictures of it. And of course, we've had a lot of rain, I ain't been able to get to everything that I walked to, but we are taking care of everything. Like I said, we do have some pictures today that I can tell you, there was a trailer there on the property that was set up for a deer trailer which I sold there for yesterday. There's no vehicles or nothing else sitting there.
I make a motion to declare it a nuisance however, I defer to Mr. Jones on monitoring it. Mr. Sebran is making the effort to get it cleaned up, but we'll go ahead and start the process, and so I'm sure by the time the time runs, we'll be in good shape, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to declare it a nuisance.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? Thank you, Mr. Sebran.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sebran.
Please continue to keep the work up on that. Item C, Richard and Sandra Kiefer nuisance property at 267 Antioch Shallow Road in District Number Three, anyone to speak on 267 Antioch Shallow Road here? I see no one here, Ms. Renee.
All right, these pictures were taken June the 22nd. We've received complaints about the manufactured home that it had burned. It's just been left, nothing's been done there. And then, we hadn't received any contact from them, these are the new pictures, it's grown up.
My understanding too, this is 16th section?
It is.
I declare it, I didn't make a motion to declare it a nuisance.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow to declare it a nuisance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion?
Yeah, so, how do you go about, what are you thinking, what do you think the judge is gonna do?
Start the process, start the process and see what happens. It could be that you've already got water and power to this site, somebody may be willing to assume the lease. If these people have been making lease payment, school board doesn't really have to go through the same process as a foreclosure process, assuming that that's not a lien against that mobile home. They can move quicker on declaring the lease null and void and release the property back out.
I believe...
I think they have somebody interested, actually.
Oh.
So we're just trying to, we're trying to do our part to get, you know, they don't, they can't come back to us and ask us to do something or slow it up.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? Motion passes. Over the back sheet of your paper there, you got item seven, but I wanted to add one thing to bring your attention, we had a pretty rough circumstance happen over the weekend in Avalon subdivision, let me get the address for you, it's Bristol Cove, I think it's 203 is the actual number. The sheriff's office served a warrant or made several arrests at this location over the weekend. This was a home, you'll see a kind of a talking point sheet there in front of you of all the things that was noticed when our deputies entered the home. Four arrests were made at this location and found six kids living in this condition. There's no running water, dry, dirty clothes piled up on the floors, dog fences through the house including upstairs sleeping areas, there's fleas throughout the whole home, there's no running water, as I mentioned at the beginning of that.
What subdivision is this again?
Avalon subdivision. So what we did from a safety standpoint, the four people obviously are in jail, Human Services picked up the six children that are there and they're in their custody, but we want to take some action to be sure we're covering the health and safety and welfare concerns at this location. So, Ms. Renee, I'm gonna let you kind of maybe speak on the actions we've taken at 203 Bristol Cove, just to say...
So as the code official, I found the house to have multiple health, safety and welfare violations under the International Property Maintenance Code and deemed the house unfit for human habitation. Y'all have a list of those deficiencies that we found. We posted a condemnation notice on the home yesterday morning, and I'm asking for authorization from the board to, for me to proceed with a notice to the owner as well as the occupants of that home, listing the deficiencies that must be corrected before they can occupy that home.
I add this item to the agenda.
Yeah, so we got a motion by Mr. Bishop to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? All right, so now we got it added to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop to approve, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign?
Thank you.
All right, so motion to adjourn on item number eight.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? Motion passes and we'll close the Planning Commission's meeting. So item four on your list, call to order the meeting on Rankin County Board of Supervisors. We'll start with public comments under item five for Civil Link, Ms. Bree Nolan.
They're not here right now.
They're not here? Okay, so...
I think they, I believe they thought we'd be a little longer.
Okay, so maybe we push that back, save it to the end, okay. All right, so we'll start with Ms. Oster.
Thank you, first item I have this morning is ratification of an emergency purchase and repair parts for the necessary, for the main electric service for the Justice Center. I think it was Monday, we had a surge and the panel was blown, and we've got to get, Johnny's got it temporary now, but it's the main power switch, and it's going to cost approximately $30,000.
Sure. Wow. So move.
But it's blown.
Is this the one in the...
Go ahead.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, discussion?
Is this the one in the computer room? Brian, do you know?
I don't know where it's located, Johnny just said it is the main switch that it fried, that goes, that controls, we lost power in here, they lost power in the Justice Center, ours came on, back on fairly quickly, but they were out for a while and he had to, he replaced it with an older one that he had and hardwired it, he said, until such time as they could get out here and fix it.
Oh, gosh, now I've seen juvenile, nevermind.
No, 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 the Justice Center.
I got you, okay.
Okay, I was thinking juvenile too.
Yeah, I was like, what else is gonna go wrong out there?
Oh, don't say that.
Well, I think we've already replaced that one once, so that's why I was asking.
All right, any further discussion? Motion, got that done, all in favor? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign? All right, motion passes, item B.
The next item is approval of a service agreement with Waste Management to place a 30 yard open top recycling dumpster at Northwest Rankin High School on Highway 25.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve, and second by Mr. Morrow, I want to add a few things on discussion on this right now, I want to make a few comments on it. Basically, what's happened at the reservoir, six, eight months ago, we've added an additional recycling bin on the North Shore. What's happening right now is Northwest Rankin High School has been extremely proactive in the recycling side along with the middle school, and they're doing recycling projects all the time. So what's happening is they're taking all the recycling material over to the one on Spillway Road which is overflowing, also with the one on North Shore. When we agreed back at maybe six, eight months ago to add an additional dumpster on the North Shore, our plans were to put one on the south side of the district to help on that recycling side as well around the school, so that's what this dumpster here's for, we just hadn't had a location up until today, so now we've got the actual location, so that's what this recycling dumpster here do for the schools, so...
Just tell them to quit, quit recycling, I mean, not that life ends out.
It sounds simple, huh?
Are you not afraid the school's just gonna load it up?
They're gonna load it up with recycling stuff, yeah. They're not gonna load it up with non-recyclings, though, these guys are passionate about this thing over there, it's a...
Are you talking about like their lunch stuff they're gonna be throwing in there?
I'm talking about all kind of, their plastics and the water bottles and all kind of stuff, they got normal dumpsters for the normal trash, this is a recycling side of that. They're actually in competition, so they actually weigh it and measure it out, they have recycling bowls.
Well, if this is just for a school, why don't the school get it, why aren't we getting it?
Well, the point of it is, at some point, maybe we can work this into a drop-off area for the areas, for the people in that same area. So we're starting this out here to see if this works and the location works.
We're gonna put it on the school property though?
Mm-hmm.
And have a, and turn it over to the public, don't they?
Well, we're not turning over to the public right now, we're seeing if this actual location works, and it's feasible to go in that spot, so...
But why would the school not do it?
I think we're just trying to encourage recycling, we've got the other two, they're using our other recycling dumpsters right now, so my point is to get the one over there to have them be able to use.
I understand, I just wondered, do you think if it's a school, the school is promoting the competition, they would also support the...
Well, again, it's the clubs that are inside the school, you know, your Beta Club and those...
Well, I mean, still, it's a school.
Well, I mean, you're exactly right, but I think it's needed there to have the dumpster there.
Well, I'm saying not needed, I just don't know why the school doesn't step up and do it. Have they even approached them?
What is this cost, Mike? What is this cost?
I think Laura may have the breakdown numbers on it.
It's going to be at least, at the very least, $500 a month, at the very least, because it's, the haul rate each time they haul it out is 275, the disposal per ton is $75, the monthly usage is 150, so you know they're gonna, even if they dump it just one time...
Well, and the thing is, we're doing that anyway, because they're still taking the same recycling stuff to Spillway Road and the North Shore locations, they're just loading up, hauling it over there, so, and we're having to dump those locations every other day on Spillway Road, so...
I mean, if the public can use it, I don't know why we pay for it, though, man.
Well, I mean, I think we're paying for it anyway, they're still dumping in our locations.
We're having to do more pickups at the other location, right? And so it's costing, I mean, I think that's where you're headed with it, if they continue on and they keep going to the other location, they just, we will have to start getting it picked up more often, which you've still got the pickup fee, but maybe you're able to alleviate that problem to some degree.
I'm trying to slow that area down, because what's happening is the dumpster area is filling up on Spillway Road and in the North Shore location, and so now we're just piling trash up all the way outside into the parking lot, and we can't get it all picked up, we can't hold it. So if we don't add one there, we're gonna have to add another one over at the Spillway Road.
You're thinking, you're thinking if you put this one here, they'll quit dumping the trash at the others?
We'll quit dumping the recycling material at the other ones, that's right.
I'm saying that it won't be on the ground, that we're having to clean it up off the ground?
Every other day, all the way out into the parking lot. So the side of this is, if we don't put one at the school, then we're gonna have to add one on the Spillway Road location, so you're gonna have to add a dumpster either way or cut out recycling, which I'm not about to vote to do there.
But the public, but the public's not gonna be able to use the one at school.
That's correct, but the ones at the school, the amount they're dumping from the school location is large amounts of recycling material, so if they're gonna continue to bring that over to the Spillway Road or the North Shore location to dump it there, so I mean, it's the same, I mean, you can put it there, you can add another one on Spillway.
Is this a month-to-month contract?
I don't think so, I think it would probably be a year's contract.
I think it's a yearly contract, let's say, the other ones are yearly.
It is.
That's just at the one school?
Just at the one school, at the high school, all right.
It's actually a three-year term that automatically renews at 12 months, so at the end of the year, you could give them notice and stop it.
I think some of your, a potential problem, which is not a, this is a problem that's gonna be at the school's problem, if it takes off at Northwest Rankin, you're gonna see other schools follow suit, I bet you.
Sure.
You know, and everybody's gonna want us to move that direction, so at some point, I'm at an agreement, I'm gonna give it a shot here at this location, but to say, if you're gonna continue to expand this thing, then the schools will have to step up and pay the hauling or the waste management part.
Or just take over completely if it's gonna be at the school.
Because it could get expensive enough.
Sounds like a great program to, for the, but I think if it's gonna be around, associated with school, they need to be soliciting the school, I'm like, Bob, I think you're gonna look at, well, I mean, if the next one wants one, you're gonna have to keep going on, I don't know whether you're gonna shut it or not.
Daniel, you know where our, uh, dirt pit, it's not a dirt pit anymore, but where we staging for, I think it's 16th section land, is that, would it just be less convenient for the school if we put it there to where it would be open for the public?
Public access?
And we wouldn't have, I mean, that way the next school couldn't say, well, y'all did this and put one at Northwest, I won't now want it.
Sure, you're talking about across 25 right there? Where are you talking about?
No, no, no.
What location are you talking about?
On Vine, yeah, Vine Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we've got a...
It used to be a dirt pit, it's not a dirt pit.
That's where they're putting the new school. The new school is going right there on Glen's View Road where it comes between it, so the new school's coming, we can for a little while, sure.
Well, I mean, the only thing, I'm, I understand what you're saying, we're gonna pay for it one way or the other, because they're, they're bringing it there.
They're gonna take it to Spillway Road, so...
Yeah, but the dilemma that, is how we handle every other school that says, hey, I want one too, if we don't put it on their school yard and we have it, uh...
I think, I think that's a good spot, I'm happy with that.
It's probably not a quarter of a mile.
No problem at all.
Well, if you put it there, be there for, I mean, we don't know whether they're gonna start construction there, we could always...
A year or so.
We could always move it, yeah.
I'm good with putting it there.
Well, you need to mean your motion in to...
Place it at that location?
Yeah. I'll go if the public can use it, I'm not down for putting it on just for school use.
So put it on the other side, which is gonna also, now, mind you, none, that's gonna also increase the amount of dumping to that spot, so it's gonna increase the fees.
Well, how are they gonna keep you from coming into school to do it anyway?
They're not gonna come into school, it's only the school folks who are gonna be using it at that location.
I know, but I mean, how are you gonna stop somebody else, you or anybody coming there to use it?
I don't know.
How are we good?
I mean, it's fenced in, you're right, so I mean, but I guess if they come in, they can still do it. When we place it at this other location...
It's wide open.
Everybody's coming to it, so...
How do, how do we monitor it at North Shore about people actually putting recyclable stuff in this stuff?
Yeah, it had, it was...
Not just throwing it on the road.
General garbage, throwing general garbage in there with it.
Well, we had signs that are up, and we had to do an educational side of that, so the first three or four months, there was general garbage all in, from mattresses to whatever else you wanted, I mean, everybody put stuff in, until they realized that's what it was, so that location has taken some pressure on Spillway Road, but without these multiple, there's so many people at the reservoir area recycling, it's a constant, everyday deal. This thing was broke, the dumpster on Spillway Road was broke, it's a compactor, okay, it was broke for about four hours on a Monday morning. Channel 3 on your side, I did an interview with them on why it wasn't fixed immediately, along with multiple phone calls all throughout the day on the recycling side, so it's an extremely popular event, it's all day long, people coming, I'd love to move it from the location on Spillway Road to get away from the fire department guys, but we don't have no location to put it, you know, it's a location to put these things to be sure they're operating the right way is a tough, tough sell, so...
I guess the reason I asked the question is because if, I'm not sure about what location they're buying, I know where Vine is and the location of the school, if we don't, if that's not an area that's going to be more prone to general garbage use as opposed to recycling use.
Well, I think, I think you're gonna have that early, so I think you're gonna have some general dumping on that spot early until we get the signs up and say, hey, look, if this is what this is, so, but I'm fine putting it there, it's just, we need, we need that recycling being in that area, so...
Because if they put regular garbage in it, they will not separate it, it then does not get recycled, it goes to the dump, to the landfill.
Right, so it's gonna be an educational side on it, so...
We are still working on the contract, Mike's been working on it, and the sheriff to get the Heinz recycling down near the barn that they're gonna have a trailer, they'll take, they're gonna take cardboard boxes and plastic and shredded paper, I believe.
Do we need to get any kind of permission from the schools to use that location on Vine Drive? Where we park our tractors and trucks and everything?
If it's gonna be a permanent fixture there.
It may be a permanent fixture for a year at least until we decide to move it.
Yeah, until they start some trucks.
And I don't know, I think their timeframe's a year and a half, we start leveling that area out, so, but it would give us time for a year. It's just gonna, and I'm all for that, because that allows everybody around to use it other than just the schools, it's just gonna increase the amount of dumping, which is an additional dollar bills, but...
So it's mainly just an honor system to recycle, I mean, keep, to throw recyclable items in?
Right, yeah, it's a tough, tough thing to manage at first, but a lot of these recycling people are so passionate, if they see somebody dumping the other side, and look, I'm telling you, it's a constant stream, you would think it's voting day at the fire station, every morning, people dumping off recycling, especially after a weekend, after holiday weekend, can't get it done fast enough, so, all right, so, I'm gonna read, change the wording, or change the wording in my motion to put it up that location, which is Vine Drive and Glen's View on the corner, on that 16th section land where we're storing our trucks and vehicles and dirt and all right now, Ms. Laura? And then I still gotta get permission from the schools, I guess, to place that there, so pending approval from the school side.
I'm sure they let you do it there, if not, let you put it on the property.
You would make the assumption, yeah.
Probably charge us for it.
You gonna second it, Bob?
Sir?
You gonna second it?
Second.
Yep, so I got a motion, Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, that's fine.
And second by Mr. Morrow, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? All right, item C, review of agendas.
Yeah, they're here.
All right, they're here. All right, so Civil Link has arrived, great to have you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's just some handouts that we put together, so you guys can kinda look at it along with us.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else you'd like to have one of these?
Maybe Ms. Laura, Ms. Laura, Jessica, if they need them. Mike, do you have one? Mike, I'm sure needs one.
All right, thank you for having us today. I'm Bree Nolan, some of you guys have met me before and met my team, I'm here with Dan Cordell, Chad Wages and Barrett Burnworth, and we just wanted to come and share a program that we've developed, and we've got a few cities doing it with us, and it's helping them to budget their, their money and their plan on their road maintenance, and to spread that plan further each year. So, if you see on the left side, you've got a quick overview of how the plan would go. So on the second page of our packet, it said, you know, step two would be evaluating, then we, then the budgeting and then implementation. So on the second page of our pamph, our packet, it said, you know, step two would be evaluating, then we, then the budgeting and then implementation. On your next page, it's kinda showing a quick, um, look at how we have the dis, well, districts for you guys. This is Ward, this is South Haven we're looking at. And it's showing they're good, they're fair, critical and lost. And then we can go in a little bit more detail on the next page where it kinda shows you a little closer overview of that particular ward. And then this is actually, shows what our website looks like. So on this side, you actually can ride the road at the same time as seeing where you are on the map and shows you where, you know, what your road really looks like and where we came up with its condition. Then we kind of have a, a way that we budget it for you. So you're not just spending all your money on all the lost roads or the ones that you're getting the most complaints out. You're getting to spread the money a little further to make those good roads not ever become lost or critical roads, which cost you more money in the end. So, and then through the course of the system or the plan is to hopefully never have any critical or lost roads in the end. And that makes your money go even further and spread throughout the county. Once we've done this for you and we've kinda, we'll ride the roads for you, analyze it, and then kinda give you an overview of, if you look at, well, the back page kinda gives you an idea of the different, um, methods that you can use to not get to the critical. Sorry, I blinked. This is my first time. Forgive me.
That's alright, you're doing good.
Standing up at a podium. Anyways, um, so you can see on this back how if you don't do it, how it goes on into overlays and everybody knows how expensive overlays can get. So using what Ergon, Amy Walker is here with us also, who has probably discussed their products with you before, um, using these cracked seals and slurries helps to maintain these roads, which is just like painting your house so that your house isn't gonna deteriorate. So we wanna do the same thing with our roads and not let them deteriorate and get to that point where people are complaining about them and having to do overlays on them. So I wanted to show you guys kind of a little quick overview of what you can see. And you can actually pull it up on like your tablet. You could be out there in the, on the, um, be able to show clients kind of what are civilians or whatever you wanna call them, what's going on with their roads.
We're having trouble here. So, um, this is a, this is our, this is a view, a map of our data that we collected in South Haven. And we have the data and the conditions on the left. We have the video showing the roads that we were riding on the right. And I'm having trouble connecting to the internet, but there is a little bit that was already buffering. And so this tracks where you are. Play it. You can, this is, the sun's glaring, but, and it's not a great screen. You can see it a lot better on the monitor here. But you can actually see the condition of the road as you're going down it. You can pause it, review it, check it out if there's problems. You can, it's an inventory of your road and a snapshot in time. So this is our, this is our data that we collect and this is the, how we can represent it and how you can look at it yourselves or Mike or whoever you wanna have access to. And so that's what we wanted to show you with our website side of it.
It's also a way to show, like if, when people are calling in, um, and they're complaining about their road, and they're asking you, you know, have you even looked at my road? Am I even on your list? You're like, of course you are. You know, you are there. We know that your road exists. We know where you are. In our scheduling, you know, what year you're gonna be into it. So you're not lost. You're not like, maybe we've looked at your road or we're not sure. We're gonna, we'll send somebody out there. You've already done it. It's already, you know, it's a proactive way of being ready for those answers when they call in. Are there any questions you guys might have?
When you evaluate, you ride that and you evaluate, this, this data you pick up is gonna come back. Then we can, it'll show, uh, the best option as far as maybe, um, the slurry seal, the sealant, or you, that'll give us the information to help choose the, the surface product and know, I guess, see the wear and, and try to catch things before they get too far. And then this will help suggest what product is best to use for the.
That's right.
Time.
Yes, sir. We, um, there's all kinds of different products. You can, you have a great road, which Mike just needed to keep in a great condition. We rate great roads down to the worst roads to your gravel roads. Um, and then you can see it. We plan for it. We'll meet with Mike and y'all, um, if he wants to be in a room and he wants y'all to help get y'all's input on what treatments will, are acceptable for your district. And so using, using all that, you know, the treatments available, what, what y'all allow in y'all's district, what kind of treatments y'all wanna put down, we'll come up with a plan to help you budget your money and budget your work into the next five, seven, 10 years to, to try to pull every road to a good, fair condition. That's the goal of this. And so video is a byproduct. It's a way to check ourselves. It's a way for y'all to look at it, for Mike to look at it, to see. Somebody calls, like you can pull it up real quick and see how it was at this point in time. Um, but a lot of the, a lot of the planning is, is done, you know, between Mike, us, y'all, to figure out how we can move forward, what plan y'all wanna put, put together to, to attack your rooms, how much money you need to be spending and where you're gonna spend it. So, yes, sir. That's true.
Well, I know, I think, um, you know, things that I've seen in, in, after going to some of these asphalt conferences is we're bad about letting our roads get too far. Um, and we could do some preventive things from different, uh, products to, and also especially, uh, look at the amount of traffic that's coming in and out of some of these roads instead of going in overlay. If we catch at the right time, the, I believe the micro and stuff like that is the better application. By doing this, how will that help? How will that help in that, I guess, manner to kinda let us know when the road's getting, uh, before it gets too far? That's what's happening now, we, we allow it to go too long.
It's, this is a way to look at everything all at once, to look at the entire road network. You don't just look at those that people called complaining about. You look at all of them. You see everything in one time and you can figure out the best way to spend your money. If you spend a hundred, $200,000 on fixing the worst roads in your, in your area, all your money's gone. Well, if you, if you know that you have all these good roads that you don't need to let get bad, then this is how you figure that out. This is our plan, our way to help you figure that out. When we look at the entire road network at one time, we can see that you have X amount of good roads, X amount of fair roads, critical, lost. And then, um, the goal is to, to get to some of them before they ever get to critical and lost where they're expensive to maintain with potholes and overlays and rebuilds. So this is our approach to that, is to, is to look at it all at once to start putting together a plan and keep you from, to keep your good roads good and then work on your bad roads and get them in a good condition.
Question I have, Barrett, is I assume when you come in, you have benchmarks. You go out there and you find a good road, or you go out there and find a fair road. So we know what your definition of good or fair is. Is that how you might approach it, or do you go a different way?
There's a rating scale. Um, we used good, fair, critical four. Um, we're moving to a 10 scale where we have a, it's less, um, subjective, more objective. Be able to print you out a one to 10 rating and you can see our rating. You can go out to that road and get out there and look at it and you can concur with our rating based on the distresses that you see. If it's a five, here's what you should be seeing. If it's a, it's an eight or a one, here's what you should be seeing. So it's less subjective, more, um, based on, it's based on the scale. So, and that was one of the issues we had when we first started is that we, we, we were good with good roads. We knew what we could do with those. We knew what we could do with fair roads, but when we got to critical roads, there were just too many treatments that we, too many choices for us to really know exactly what to do. So we refined that, I guess.
So my understanding is, is that you take a visual, a video of all the roads, if you, if you just travel down, whatever vehicle you use, and you come back into the office of whoever on your team is, y'all sit there and go through, once you classify one through 10, you break those into good, critical, whatever, and then you start working towards making recommendations based on the classifications for that group of roads. These are some options you have. And if Mike decides, he sees one road out there that really catches his attention or that needs to be addressed, whatever reason, then we have a more definitive remedy or solution.
Yes, sir.
That kinda how you.
That's pretty much how, how it's going.
How, how often will y'all drive those roads in video?
Three to five years.
Yeah. Three to five years is kind of a, you know, range. You can do it more or less. But what we found, especially with South Haven, and that's where I'm based, is that this was done in late 2015. By, uh, January of this year, we had some that were fair, critical, that just, we had a hard freeze come through and they just got destroyed. We were down to subgrade. It was mud. People were tracking mud in their driveways whenever it's pulling in. And so we're gonna push for another survey this year. So we're gonna try to get it every three years. But it's, it's really, um, you know, how you feel you need it and like that. But we would recommend if you're gonna get in a program like this, reevaluate it every three, five years.
Alright, so Barrett, what's the cost of this thing?
Well, um, that depends. I think we have, um, we have a contract ready, don't we?
Yeah, I think you have it.
Mike, would this be a tool that would help us on these, uh, places like Daniel and Jay have experienced where they're tearing our roads up? If they, if we had this in the video and a rating, would that give us some defense? I mean, something that we could say, no, here's what this road was rated, uh, how it was rated by a third party? I mean, even if it was a year old or, or two years old, it wouldn't be more than three because if they do it every three years. But would that give us, just, would it help?
Well, I think you got, got in the court situation, you know, when somebody got fighting these things. Uh, like I said, I'm not, not prepared enough, so I can't answer that, but, uh, I think it'd give you evidence that what the road looked like a year from.
Yeah. How reliable it was.
Just a year ago, you know what the road looked like. And then, you know, if it gets totally disrupted in a year, you know, so yes, I, I, I think so.
Do you understand where it's going with that? Where, where it's getting with that?
To help answer that question, he, there's a, and how it relates, there's a big push on the coast. They really liked the idea of the video for that reason because they lost or left, left sitting a lot of money on the table when Katrina hit because they couldn't tell the true damage of the roads because they didn't have a snapshot of what that damage was when, when the storm came through, even if it was a year, two years old. So they had to come through and make some adjustments. And when you're trying to receive money for those adjustments, they're always on the low side. So they feel like, if, you know, they'd been in a program that if a storm hit or some damage was caused now, they have justification to be able to better rate or better indicate the value of their road. So that's one of the driving factors they have down on the coast is, is kinda what you're talking about. Proof of what your condition is. Even if it's a year or two old, conditions don't typically change that bad. In a year or two, you have a snapshot of what you have. So can you ask about the dollar figure on it? Um, the, for the entire, um, county, it's a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Right. Now, that's not to go back and just re-video. That's the assessment, the working through the budget. One thing she didn't mention was, right now, you're spending out of budget money, say, three, four, five million, whatever's in the budget to do street maintenance and repairs. Um, the problem is there's no real good plan for the best way to spend that money and make it go the, the longest distance. So right now, it's more of reactive than a proactive approach. And what this will allow you to do is apply that money where it keeps you from spending more money later. Uh, when we get done, we'll be able to show you what not spending a certain amount of money would cost you in the future as roads deteriorate of, of, over their lifespan. If you can hit them when they're seven to 10 years, which is why you put a new road on, it's as good as it's ever gonna be at that time. If you start applying some, some treatments, paint, as she indicated, to, to the, to the building, you can keep that road from being 20 years lost if you're applying a, a 25 cents on a dollar approach to the repair at seven to 10 years. So when you look at your total road mileage and you apply that budget that you have, and you look at, I got a thousand miles in the county. And if my life expectancy is I need to start treating stuff where I'm touching a road every 10 years, you're basically looking at, you need to be getting 100 miles a year of some type of treatment. And that includes the roads that are so bad right now that they need to be overlaid or the roads that need to be some type of seal treatment. So the reason we can't give you that number right now today is you have to work with Mike and, and y'all to figure out what you will allow as a treatment. We can tell you when we need to apply it, once you have the road evaluated, and what the best treatment is for that, uh, condition at this point. Sometimes you may or may not feel that that's appropriate for the area that you're doing a treatment in. You know, you get into certain areas where you have curb and gutter, certain citizens may not like the idea of certain seal treatments. And that's where Ergon comes in to help us work with Mike and y'all to figure out, you know, what that been. And once, once we have that, that determination, then you can compile all this together and get a fairly good cost for budgetary purposes of what you need to be spending a year. So that's, that's where some of that comes from. And that's why it kinda all meshes together after you get done with the evaluation.
So the cost is 150,000 for the first year?
No, that's, that's to get the whole program done.
Three years, worth of us, information, access to your system, stuff of that nature.
And, and that'll get you to, um, um, the only thing that, that we would recommend redoing in the future and as you get in the program, he mentioned the, the re-video, which means some, some re-evaluation, which is that'll reduce costs. I don't have that here either. But it's not the, because we've worked through the program and had you budget numbers then. It's just a matter of updating the data. But the other thing that it does is evaluates and recalibrates your program because when you start, you don't have a good historical data on where, where you've been. So it's a snapshot. So as you go through time and you update this assessment, it, it helps validate where you're at in your program and how effective it's been and gives you some new time ranges on where roads are at in their lifespan. So, you know, we may recommend initially by charts, which industry standards of a seven-year life of where you need to be. Your roads may be operating where we're good at a 10-year cycle. So you can reduce some of it. It may be that it needs to be six. But you'll know that after time going through it. So, and the whole video set, assessment and everything, working through the program was the 154,000. And then the only thing that would be updated would be the, the video update, depending on how the program's working. And Mike can really help better determine that as we're going through the program. Maybe five, in five years, he may be making enough headway that the calls are being reduced and it's more just to calibrate the system at that point.
Besides South Haven, who else have been your clients as far as this type of program?
Well, we're currently in the program with Tupelo. Every client does it a little different. You kinda have to adapt it for the, the, their wants and their needs. Uh, and we're currently under contract with the South Mississippi PDD, which covers the entire coast. They went with, uh, they went with the idea of trying to offer this service to them and to their clients indirectly using us. So we don't contract directly with the entities in their instance. We contract with them direct. So, um, we're actually meeting with Beluxi in, um, on September to get started on, uh, their program, so.
Any other counties, though?
No, date, no other counties. Other than the, there, there are some in the works with them, but no, none have started yet.
Alright, so if it starts, let's just say hypothetically, you started today filming. How long does it take you before we get a working product to look at?
The filming takes roughly four to six weeks, uh, on travel time. And then we do a QA process where we actually, when we go through filming it the first time, we're filming it and, and, and rating it as you go, uh, and tying it to GPS so that you can get the locations on the road. Then it comes back and we assess the video to kinda have a QA check on the initial field check and what the video's showing us because some adjustments may have to happen. Um, and then it, over the next two to three weeks after that, so roughly two to three months, you'll have the website and the video assessment done. And that's when we'll start working with Mike and y'all. And that's when we'll start working with Mike and y'all over the treatment types, because at that point, we have what we need to be able to populate the dollar cost, which we know the, the treatments that are allowed and the areas' cost for those treatments. So, roughly three to four months, you'll have a, a product back where it tells you exactly how big your problem is, what you should be spending in a, a budget year, and then, what type of roads, you know, how much money you should be spending on each type of road condition. So, it's not just all bad, it's like he said, some good, some fair, some that don't. And, and now, those miles may be increased, because certain treatments go further than others. So, it's really a road mile basis thing. But we gotta get back to that 100 miles of, a year to get you back in the program, so. Hopefully, that answered everything.
Anything else? Jay? Dee?
Sure.
No, thank you.
All right, great, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Oster, did we stop on item C?
Yeah, review of agendas for our upcoming meeting, if y'all have any questions.
Hey, let me, let me add one other thing back between kind of items B and C. I know we mentioned that dumpster, while I was sitting here thinking, the dumpster there on Vine Drive at Grunsvue? If we're gonna do it, I almost think we need some kind of fence around it. A wooden fence on the visual side of it. If not, you may have a dumpster sitting there in the middle of Vine Drive.
What you got up on, like, on there?
Fence, wood fence all around both of them?
They're both at fire stations, so they're.
Yeah, both got wooden fences around them.
Well, they're right there, we put them up for that.
We put them up for that, both those locations.
Well, the one at Reservoir's been there for quite some time.
Y'all did that years ago. So, it just mimicked the ones that was on Spillway. But the location there on Vine Drive, I almost think we need a fence around, the more I think about it, just from the visual side of a dumpster sitting right on a corner road.
Probably would help stop or maybe slow down people just throwing their trash in there too.
Right.
What would they do if it's at school?
Must get a fence around it.
Cyclone?
Wood, sorry, got one there.
See, I think if you go back to school for a while, we have to go to expense to put in a fence in. I'm almost, you know, kind of, I get the public, you know, what's, what, making it available to them, but I mean, we haven't had any push. I mean, y'all guys are up in that area, you had any push in that area for recycling, or is it?
Weekly.
Oh, yeah. In that area?
Absolutely, yeah. Because everybody from the Castle Woods, Mill Creek areas, southern part of that district goes over to Spillway Road. So, I'm trying to get the people on Spillway to go to North Shore. Just something I'm thinking about, because we're gonna get phone calls on the trash on the outs, on the visual side of that. But I don't know what a fence would cost, Mike?
About 15 bucks a foot, linear foot, not the county gate.
You know what kind of fence you do?
They're gonna take it back down, send them.
With a year or so.
Year and a half.
Year and a half.
Yeah. It just hit me on the visual side of that while we were sitting here talking.
You'll have to put some kind of fence up there where you lock the, you know, where you hope to.
You lock the one that locked open?
They keep the gate shut off.
Opening mornings?
I would think you could build a fence around there for under $1,000, easy.
I mean. Nigga space you trying to fence in?
Yeah, you're talking about, just around a, whatever, however big a 30-yard, open, 30-yard open retop? I mean, so, from here to that.
Oh, you're not talking fencing in an area, you're talking just fencing in the dumpster.
Fencing in the dumpster itself, yeah, I'm not talking about the whole area. I'm talking about a small between, yeah, something between maybe here and that first row of chairs.
Yeah, they won't lay that up.
No.
Getting where it's even sounding like we're, you know, now I got a problem with recycling, you know. It looks like we're starting to step out our program here. I mean, we keep them up, want to do it for the public, that's fine, we're gonna do it, and then, for Northwest Rankin. But I mean, is this the optimal location? I mean, is, I mean, you're gonna do this, I mean, if it's that kind of need, I can see this is going to evolve into a
Sure.
potential permanent situation that we're gonna get in the end. And it's just, we're gonna spend the money for a fence, and, you know.
Well, and, and that's the issue down here, having a location, that's, that's where we struggle. We don't have a location. I can't find a location in that, I don't wanna say the southern side of that district, but.
Whenever y'all want to do this.
I, I, I would like to suggest to add, if we can get a fence for under 1,500 bucks, $1,500, Mike, around that dumpster, if the board's all right with that side of it for, we're talking about a year and a half, which has got to come down anyway. Any objections, comments?
I don't care. I think a fence is a good idea, that kind of helps, kind of keep somewhat of a controlled issue to it.
But are they bad about just going through, if the gate's locked, just throwing it out on the ground? I mean, where you are now?
Yeah, I mean, they'll do whatever. I mean, but, but again, we, we're trying to police it as best we can.
I'll see them dump it at the gate, at the county barn. It's locked, so they just dump it out there.
All right, so Ms. Lard, do you need that in a motion at all, or just, do you think we can handle that?
I think y'all can just get directed.
All right, any other additional business on your item seven?
Yeah, well, I just want, I got one thing I need.
Mike's got something too.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
No, I just got something I want to run by you. I hope Craig will be here for this. I told him I'd bring it, talk to the board, y'all make a decision. There was, I got a couple of pictures, if you need to see them, he sent them to me. But on Florence Farm Road, there was a hole, pothole, kind of on the side, on the shoulder of the road. But it actually had broken off a little bit of asphalt. You could still see the white line, but not very much of it, just really a small bit. So, this car runs off or drops off the side, destroys the tire and rim. And, you know, it, so we, we patched it and all that. Anyway, they're asking for compensation on the tire and wheel, and I don't know estimated cost. But I talked to Craig, and Craig looked up something that says the statute says protects state and government aid indices from damage, from potholes, whatever. It basically comes down to, you know, if the board moves to do it, then you can do it. I know we have done it in some cases in the past. So, anyway, I told him I would just come talk to him. I'd bring it up today, get y'all have some discussion input, side yea or nay, you know. That's, that's where I am.
So, it's kind of hard to, I mean, where you do that, and then, I mean, Mike's asked me about one this morning on Woodrow Martin Road, claims that we were doing some, playing out some pipes in there, and she's claiming that our construction caused bearings or something, you know, to mess up her car. And she's submitted a request to get reimbursed, and I don't know, ain't Mike and Bobby allowed to?
Hey, we, hey, we had, look, we, we had one in the Willows where this, Mr. May was in there doing the work. Guy drives over to the holes he makes, punches a hole in his gas tank, wants us to pay for that too, so.
I mean, I just.
What's been our work, history, how, how have we handled this? And I know this is the first time.
We haven't done it in a very, very long time.
I think we did one on that three-pronged road, wood, had somebody.
Done one in a very long time. Typically, the way it's handled is if the problem has been brought to the county's attention prior to it, like there's more, and it has not been fixed timely, and something happens, we consider it. But if we have no notification of what's happened, we're, we're zim from having to do something, or we'll be fixing.
Everybody's tired and.
I'm not even sure how you do it, whether you get notified about it.
I think we need to just let our road manager make the recommendations. If he feels it's justified, and he recommends for us to pay for it. If not, we don't deal with him.
Yep.
My Jeep jumping all four of the rims on it. And lift kit, it's up off his road.
We had a picture of the shoulder, you know, I mean, it's, it's not something, you know, how when you have curves and something, a trailer or something popped off, it beats out a hole there. That's basically what this was, and then it broke off the side. But I, I, I ain't show you.
I, I think, I'm with Jay, I think that in order to be a case by case, and road manager make the recommendation. Supervisor of, of that district and him, I don't want, I don't want a set of presidents either way.
No, I don't either, because I mean, you got this deal you're talking about, and one you're talking about, I understand it. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just telling him I would bring it here.
You know, if it's one that we knew about and we let it go, and they tore something up, then I don't want to open the barn gates.
Right, and if it's in the, if it's in the main travel of the lane, it's a little bit too, and we catch most of those real quick, so, anyway, all right, well, that's what I, I told him I'd, what I'd do. All right.
All right, any other additional business?
I got, I got a little bit of that.
All right.
Yeah, that's right.
Brian, he may be able to clue, clue us in on this a little bit too. We got a house trailer, it's a little house trailer. Have y'all seen the picture of? Sitting in the road.
In the road again?
Again.
Is it the same one?
This is even better, because I actually took the saws off and cut off part of it that was in the road. Where you could get by.
Oh, my gosh.
Louis cut the back.
They cut the back six foot of that dollar.
The trailer?
Yeah.
I'm believing. Whose district is that?
Don't even say it.
Let's see, you don't show the part you cut off, huh?
Yeah, that's the part you cut off.
It was, it was broke down.
The saws off.
They were moving it without any permit, without anything.
Hey, it's still in the road.
And it, the tractor couldn't get it up in the, wherever they were trying to move it, on one of the very back roads in my district, and evidently stayed out.
Wasn't that in your district too?
Yes, this was about three miles from it, two miles.
Is it the same guy with the tractor?
Huh?
Is it the same guy?
No, no, no. Anyway, he, the tractor couldn't get it out of the road. Well, we didn't know, from what we gather now, it's been there the whole weekend, blocking half the road.
That's where the other one was.
And so, then, then they go down there and he can't get it out of the road, you gotta get it out of the road. Next thing, Renee, who's sending people down there because, you know, moving it without any permit, anything. Anyway, I get a phone call that says, well, he just cut the, it's out of the road, cut the back of it off so it wouldn't stick out in the road. I said, what was sticking out of it? He said, cut the whole back end off. I said, of the trailer? He said, yeah, I took the chain, drug it off the side, said he'd put it on later.
Golly.
Put it on later?
I'm just telling you what we're saying, though.
Todd May was down, looked at this, and y'all, and they have the tongue strapped on, and it's not just welded to it. The tongue's strapped on. I mean, he's gonna have to reweld the tongue on, put a couple of axles on it. I've talked to Craig on this, I know he's out of town, but Craig says, you know, we're within rights, Brian, them impounding it, taking it, I reckon we'll take it to the
Same location.
Same location our other one's at right now. And their assessment on the road, damage or whatever, if they want it, they can come collect it. But we was looking for the authorization to get Brian to go ahead and get started on this. It's gonna cost about $5,000 to do it, Brian.
Yeah, but it's, the reason we're calling, let me back up a minute, the last one, Todd May should charge us nine. He just did it as a public service, so he didn't charge us nine, the last one. But he paid, he cut it, when he moved his house and stuff, he said he was charged from $2,500 to $3,500 a day. So, we came up with, it's gonna take you two days, because he got to put axles on it, weld the tongue to it, and we'll move it tomorrow.
Well, it's a job, he's got, yeah, it's.
So, if you in Rankin County, you want your trailer dealt with, just pull it out in the road.
Yeah.
It's not perfect. No, wait, why, why did you have to put axles on it? What were they pulling it on? They weren't.
They, they don't pull the axles out from under it.
Really?
Yeah. Tongue broke, tongue folded up.
We had to buy axle for the last one, so you can get them all to be able to do it on this.
Lot of, lot of work in it.
Same, but they don't have a big fire.
Still be in the middle of the road.
It was that, or we're getting.
It's on the side.
But I mean, the only thing is, I mean, I thought about, me and Brian talked about taking track of it down there and demolition it, but, I mean, we gotta hold it according to Craig for what, 90 days?
Are you serious?
I make a motion that we add this to the agenda?
All right, motion by Mr. Morrow to add it to the agenda, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign.
I make a motion, we up to $6,000 to give you a little room to play with?
I think $5,000.
85, up to $5,000 for relocation of this trailer in District One of Rankin County?
Motion by Mr. Morrow to spend $5,000 in District One.
If you can get it rolling, if you can get it rolling, move it over to District Three.
Where were they taking it to?
They were gonna put it up.
So, rather than paying Todd to move it way to over here, why don't we just pay him to put it on their land?
I don't think it's worth it so much.
I don't think it's, you know, I talked to Renee, but I don't think it's gonna.
I was just saying, put it on their own property rather than ours.
Then we're gonna turn around and have.
Yeah, exactly.
Seriously, what if we turned it into nuisance and make them get rid of it?
I think Todd.
We gotta get it.
Oh, it's still out.
Still, we gotta get it moved, right?
Oh, it's still sticking out some, that's right. Yeah.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines.
Can't wait a minute, can we drag it in farther out of the road and, and?
But who's property, it may be on somebody else's property.
It's on his property.
It's his property.
I, I, I don't know either, man.
I'm assuming it's his, because that's where he was going in with it. But I don't know either.
I, I just hate us, keep eating this cost, you know, that's my only deal.
I don't think it's worth, it ain't worth the $5,000.
No, 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 we don't think $5,000. Craig said he was gonna.
Where are we at on the first one?
Go on the taxi and.
What's happening with the first one?
Well, he didn't charge us on it, did he?
Yeah, we get charged on, but we.
Well, I'm talking about just following up on the guy who parked it in the road. Are we not taking, having any recourse on the first one that parked?
Now, we can get together and just rip it apart, put a dumpster, hold it up. I'm not sure if he can go back and see if he can cost them, the man I was taking down.
You're not gonna get a thing from him.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I'm just, I just hate to spend the $5,000 to dispose of it.
Well, on the back end, maybe just move it a few more feet on that property, then you won't try and get caught for months.
Well, I'm saying, if it, if it's his property, if we just got it up on that property and then turned it over nuisance, he'd get rid of it.
But you're still talking about a 60-day process.
Only thing is, though, is.
As long as you don't care.
Like, like Todd told me, if he hooks on to it, drags it up out of the road, then they can say, well, he told the axles, the tongue.
Well, what if we take a dozer down, hook to it, and just drag it out of the road? Because it'll help for the safety.
Oh, I, I don't know.
I, I'm just asking.
Yeah, talk to somebody.
I mean, because of the, the fact that it's stuck in the road, we gotta get it out of the road.
I mean, it's a road that is right now, you got to go in somebody's yard to get around it.
I think we gotta do it the right way. I mean, $5,000, and then get Craig to see if he can assess something back on the, I don't think we can. Well, I mean, if the guy may, I mean, if he owns that land, then we might be able to.
I don't, I don't know the history, I know, I think I know the general family that owns all that property, but I don't know anything about that particular piece. And like I say, we didn't even know it was being done. It's one of those deals.
I guess you got, you got the question, can you find out about Tuesday's, with the family, some, a member of the family to find out if there's an option here? Because we're meeting again Tuesday morning.
Could we find out?
We're trying to get it out of the road.
Huh?
Well, I guess that's Mike's thing, is we need to get it out of the road.
Yeah, Mike, well, it's in the road though, since last weekend.
We're gonna be liable.
Yeah, but I mean, at the point of, he's coming to us asking us to move it, does the liability not follow in us? Over the weekend, somebody hits it? I would say it would.
I said, just like on a abandoned car.
That's right. I think we had action to move today, but.
I definitely would, don't forget it. Remind Craig so that we can follow.
Craig told me that we find out the name, he would go forward with, you know, judgment or whatever. Brian was talking about, or taxes or whatever.
I sure do miss Slay, you know.
Yeah, I know it, because I can't talk like Slay does, all that stuff, but.
Well, you know, as long as we got offspring here, maybe Slay could have sent some offspring or something. All right, so I got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion on it?
That's not.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed, the light sign. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Alright?
I got, uh, one other thing me and Brian's been working on, y'all, this basis around this, this chemical spraying.
I've seen it.
We're talking about doing all rideways and some of these road ditches that we got to maintain, these rock ditches.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we've met with, Brian's met with the guy, I've met with him, he's going to take old van and road, we've been having some grass problems, going to turn it into kind of like a Bermuda release type deal, going to spray it and get that Bahia grass dyed down, and get it to where it's more of a, or you can maticure it a little better, or keep it bushed off a little better, where the grass is not growing. So wrap it on it, and then we, he's going to do one riff wrap ditch, ditch for us, which is all under the five thousand dollars, but.
What's he going to do, the riff wrap ditches?
Going to spray them, keep them.
All over the county?
No, just the ones we maintain, NRS ditches on it.
Ones we've got money into.
So, you saying we going to kill the grass on Old Fane?
No, 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 it's a retardant.
It's a retardant.
It's cut, keeps it broken. Alright.
And actually, the way I, when I sit down and talk to him.
I'm fixing to say, I think you ought to say something too, you know, you got to have a.
But we're not killing it.
Exactly what this does, it actually will save you money in the long run, according to this guy, because you write down the number of cut molders that you have to do on it, so you make up money to call for him to spray it. So you actually save money in the long run.
Hey, man, I'm all for it.
Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll make the motion to add it to the agenda.
Wait, what is this, uh?
What is this, huh?
How many applications is that?
Yeah.
See if it works.
No, I don't, I just let y'all know what we're doing, so if somebody calls y'all.
So you're still going to do a motion? Old Fane though, right? On Fridays, alright, okay.
Steve, you like it cut on Fridays?
Well, that's the only day y'all wouldn't let us by law board, cut it.
I got to love it, but it's going to cut, you know, twelve times, cut six times.
Yeah, so you don't need anything from us on that.
He goes ahead and sprays the ditches now? He said, boy, he said by the end of September?
End of September.
First October, I can send some emails, everything will be there, they can break it off, or whatever.
Roll with it.
Just pick up all the dead stuff.
Alright, go with it then. You don't need anything else?
But I mean, it's just something we're looking at into the future of the county rideways, maintaining.
And the ditches.
But we can spray this up, and we're not flipping the road six times, and, I mean, it's not going to kill it, it's just going to float the grass down, you know, uh.
Well, and I think, you know, where you got to, uh, well, y'all have done it already, we're down like on Florence Barrow, where those riff wrap berms are.
Right.
You know, we don't, and, and actually, I see where, different places where we put in, uh, put in bridges, and we got the riff wrap there, and we, we can't get down and cut it, I think it's good to spray that.
But I mean, this guy, he does, he does a lot of county-state roads, very knowledgeable. I mean, they take, they kill a flower on somebody's place, he tells us, he takes a hundred percent responsibility for it, you know, but we were trying to do a trial deal this year on it right now, to see what it looked like.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to let y'all know.
Alright, anything else on additional business?
Thank y'all.
He got a little extra out there spraying some in my yard. So they're cutting down.
Did you have any questions under the review of agendas? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what is that?
There was a question about Hines, adding Hines to the.
What is that, SS Rankin?
That is a ship that was named after Rankin County.
I didn't know there was.
That served for, was commissioned.
You're going to learn something, Tuesday, you're going to learn something.
USS Rankin, as far as Tuesday's meaning.
And this gentleman.
It was a ship that was named after Rankin County, it was decommissioned and.
Vietnam, or maybe World War.
It's a World War II ship, 1945 commission, so.
Make somebody still live in that Rankin County, is this right, everyone?
There is a gentleman coming, but I think it would be later than the World War II, he would be.
I think so too, because that's a motion.
Yeah, because my father was in World War II, and he's going to be in.
Korea maybe?
Mm-hmm, so.
But it had multiple conflicts, so, the ship did. Alright, um, I know, I asked Janice to send out yesterday, where I couldn't send out an email on the Hines Community College, deal on that, you know, Centennial thing, was asking for a thousand dollars on that. Do we need to add that to the agenda?
We can, we can add it to.
Yeah, can you kind of explain that?
Yeah, explain that. What is?
Did you have the brochure in front?
I do.
I think I've got one on my desk, but, you've got one.
This is the, um, let's see what it says here. They're having a, I don't think that's it.
I think it's some kind of recognition ceremony thing.
It's a hundred years of community service, it said, um.
It's in the next couple of weeks, I think.